Right, with that, we'll go ahead and begin our regular meeting of the Planning Commission. This is November 17th, 2010. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Roll call?
(inaudible)
Here.
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 Commissioner Nolan, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the public communications portion of agenda. I don't see any speakers' cards and I don't see anything, anyone other than the applicant and I think everyone else that's involved with the first discussion, the first discussion item here, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. And we have one item on the agenda, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of November 3rd, and which I will abstain because I was not here. So I'll let Commissioner Foster take that one on.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting from November 3rd.
Second it.
Kohler?
Yes.
Becker?
Abstain.
Foster?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I don't see Todd Wilson here. He usually reports on the municipal advisory council. The next MAC meeting is on November 15th, and that one actually was canceled. The next one is on December 20th, and Commissioner Kohler will attend that. And moving on to disclosure of site visits, the next party contacts. Commissioner Kohler, have you been to the site?
I was there twice this week and before.
Okay. I've been to the site several times. I should disclose I did have a contract for work with the Athletic Club this year, although it was well below the threshold for financial issues or whatever, so I don't think that I'll have a bias in this at all anyways.
I haven't been on the site. I'm familiar with the streets surrounding it, though.
And I have visited the site.
Okay. The first item on our agenda is concept review CR 10-04 for an expansion of facilities including 7,907 square feet of new dormitory space and four new tennis courts, a lot line adjustment and a rezone for 2.77 acre site involving accessories parcel numbers 023-0-190-003, 005, and 006 at 428 Bryant Circle in the city of Ohio. The general plan designation for the project is commercial manufacturing and public quasi-public P. The zoning designation for the site is light manufacturing industrial M1 and public quasi-public PL. The preparation of an initial study for the project, once it is formally submitted, would be required to determine the type of environmental document that should be prepared for the project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The property owner is the Ohio Valley Athletic Club. Their representative is David Burry. And with that, we'll go right to our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'm used to sitting over there. I feel a little different here, but I'll give it a shot because I want to show you a couple of slides. Staff and the applicant tonight would like your commission's comments and recommendations as part of a concept review for this project, which is a proposed expansion of the tennis academy's facilities and a few adjustments in lot lines and a look at the zoning for an expansion of the tennis academy. The existing development on the site is the 13,000 roughly square foot building that is, operates as a school and dormitory facility for the tennis academy. It operates under a conditional use permit because it's in the M1 zone. And that's the building you see there on the eastern part of the site. As you move west on the site, it's less developed. There's a basketball court and some maintenance facilities and some, a small shed that's used for storage, I think, and of course, the applicant can fill you in more on that. And of course, parking areas and landscaping. And the proposal is to add around 7,000-plus square feet to the building to expand the capacity for the dormitory space, support facilities in the building for the students, and also to add four tennis courts on the western side. And I'll give them a little more detail, but I want to show you the proposed lot, changes in the lot lines. I tried to color this, which I don't think it is in your plan set, to make it a little more clear. Right now, there's the M1 parcel to, on the east side, and that supports the existing facility. And then the Ohio Valley Athletic Club owns a larger piece, actually owns the whole property, but has the PL zone property that you see hatched there. And then there's another rectangular property to the west that is currently vacant. So what would happen with the lot lines is the green around the whole thing is what would result as one parcel and a small little parcel in the bottom, in the southwest portion for maintenance. The red lines would be erased to bring the, to bring it into one large parcel. Here's the zoning, again, surrounding zoning, the light purple, whoops, I don't know how to use this. The light purple is the M1. The bluish color is PL, which is public, and the site is outlined here in yellow. And VMU Village mixed use is the sort of brownish color up to the north. In the staff report, we went through a sort of an exercise on what kind of zone districts might make sense for this property. And it gets sort of complicated. There's a lot of nuances in the code. Staff's recommendation was, is that the applicant would, should propose and the commission should consider PL for the whole site for a variety of reasons, which I can get into later in the question time. I want to get to, get through the basics and let the applicant describe the project. So the capacity would expand, and the applicant will tell you about how many units, and I want to talk about the parking configuration as well. Here's the proposed site layout, and this right now is a parking area that's shared by the tennis academy and the Athletic Club. This right now comes down like this and would be deleted and replaced with the tennis courts and dorm facilities for parents and students. It, to, as far as circulation, right now, the project takes access here off Bryant Circle. The proposal is to move that access here to the east and to cut off the current informal access through the private property that comes down like this. That's used by some cars and pedestrians. The existing parking would be reduced for both uses because the parking would be replaced by the tennis courts. About 37 spaces would be the resulting for the, for the tennis academy use. Another note on the parking is that the tennis academy students are not allowed to have cars at school, and so that reduces the amount of parking needed. There's a van pool that gets the students around. And that, finally, I want to note that it's in the Bryant Industrial Area, so fees would be required towards the, and I didn't notice, note this in the staff report, fees would be required toward the circulation improvements in the area. As many of you know, there was an email exchange, one of the commissioners that couldn't be here noted some connectivity issues that we think should be discussed, wanted to bring up. For one, the property does have frontage on the Fulton Street right of what, right of way. This is a planned extension. The exact build-out date is unknown right now, but the connectivity issues that were brought up is that, again, this currently functions as a connection from Bryant Circle up to Fox Street through the Ohio Valley Athletic Club. That, the project wouldn't necessarily cut off pedestrian circulation, but the path network is not necessarily expressly conducive to maintaining that. And of course, the vehicular circulation there would be cut off. Staff, in looking at the project if it came back, and we can discuss this more tonight, would be looking at exploring ways to improve the circulation, add a little connectivity. Certainly, some form of build-out of Fulton Street along the right-of-way there would probably be a condition of approval, both to improve access to the site and also to fill in that portion of the circulation network. The, right now, the current, the proposal has, let's see if I can get, has a, an option for a future connection to Fulton Street up here in the right, in the, up in the northeastern corner, but that may be something that the commission and the applicant want to look at, making a connection to Fulton Street and requiring extension up to there. Forgive me for being a little halting tonight. I'm not sure if I covered everything for now. Maybe we can start with that. The applicant can fill it in, and I can answer questions and fill in things that I left out. You have any questions for me before we get to that part?
Any questions, Abe?
Abe, just clarify that the maintenance property in the lower southwest corner, what, is that something that is, exists independent of this, of this property, or is it going to be designated for?
That, well, the applicant can fill you in a little more on that, but right now, that is a proposed very small parcel that would be, that's designated, they're shaking their head.
Yeah, it won't be a separate parcel.
Oh, okay. It's, okay. In the plans, it says proposed lot, so they can, they can clarify that. Actually, that component of the project led, is part of what supported the idea that PL would be the right zoning designation because only PL allows, would allow the commission through a design review permit to decide what size of parcel, there's no minimum parcel size, but I guess we won't need to go there on that. Other questions?
Thanks, Abe. David, did you want to come on up? Great.
Maybe a light would be, I can't read my plans here otherwise. There we go.
And David, if you could state your name and association for the record when you can.
You got it. All right, great. David Burry, 215 Church Road, Ojai. And before I proceed, I'd like to introduce you to Mark Weil, owner of Weil Tennis Academy, and really the applicant here this evening, and Martin Hartman, my associate at work, and my right-hand Don Libby-Boll, and he's working with me on this project as well, so. But Mark is representing, obviously, the applicant. This is his facility. There is another entity involved, and those are the owners of the Ohio Valley Athletic Club, formerly the Ohio Valley Racket Club. And they are in a purchase agreement pending the outcome of this process, to be perfectly frank. But we're working our way through this, and we're very optimistic about this because we think we've got a really great project to present to you tonight. Abe did a great job of kind of giving you the broad strokes on this, and I won't belabor it too much. I think you've all had an opportunity to review the plans, but I will walk you through some of the more salient points of the project if I can. First of all, it is a complex little project, okay? And the actual architectural portions of it are not complex. We're doing a simple, well, not, simple isn't perhaps the operative word, but we're doing a, an addition, a 7,000-square-foot addition to an existing 13,000-square-foot building. And then we're also proposing a 4,000-square-foot additional building, all part of the dormitory complex that we have proposed for the tennis academy. That aspect is fairly straightforward. What makes it complex are the mechanations involved in the lot line adjustment and general plan amendments and zoning designations and all those little subtle nuances, and then also parking is a consideration and traffic and all the other things that make up any other project, but those little subtleties, if you will, of the lot line adjustment make it a little bit tricky. So I'll try and explain that to you a little bit if I can. I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to read the fine print, so I need to walk you through that. This then is our property. This is the same graphic that Abe had. We have, and again, I'll try not to walk you through the same things. Let's see, is my pointer going to stop? No, here it is. Why don't I see it, though? Am I missing it up there? I just lost all?
One on the left.
Okay, good. Laser, there we go. It's back. This is all part of the original Ohio Valley Racket Club parcel, 10-plus acres. And without going through the precise chronology, this building was proposed, approved, and built on the overall parcel that was subsequently subdivided off as a single, one point, is it 1.4 acres, I think, something like that, 1.5 acre parcel. And then it went through some changes in the zoning and CUPs, and again, I'm not going to walk you through the history on that. That was kind of the past, but it just kind of presents the kind of unique characteristics we have here because this was originally built as an office building in a zone that didn't accommodate office use, therefore a CUP was issued to allow that use, but then also was revised, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe I'm getting part of this wrong now, now that I'm thinking about it. The CUP was primarily for the dormitory use, not because of the office use in the M1 zone, but the dormitory use that was proposed for this building that was originally built as an office structure. So that had previously been approved and it stood alone on this parcel, but now, because of the huge success of the Weil Tennis Academy, they're a really important cultural and community asset for us now as both, you know, as a sports town, as a tennis town, and as just supports, obviously, our outdoor lifestyle, and Ohio is famous for its educational facilities, so it just all ties together perfectly. And the Weil Academy has been extremely successful. And so they need more space for their students. Their students are almost entirely boarding students, maybe entirely, I could say. And a good portion of them are visitors, not necessarily from the United States with US population, but also foreign visitors as well, all here to get a college preparatory education and in tennis, in unique collaboration with the Ohio Unified School District where they attend classes for academics. But then they go and have their sports education here at the academy and at the racket club, at the athletic club. At any rate, this is that overall parcel that was part of that athletic club. This was subdivided off into another piece. Now, because of the success of the Weil Academy, they want to consolidate and maintain more of a campus feel to the overall, to their property as a unique and separate entity from the rest of the club. So to accommodate that, we'll all be united into a single parcel with lot lines being added and lot lines being removed. In that process, though, an ambiguity arises where we end up with two zoning designations on one parcel. I noticed in the staff report, if I understood it correctly, it was leaning towards designating it all PL or P, which I think is the way to go. I'm really pleased that that's going in that direction because that accommodates this type of use. And it may negate, and this is up to Planning Commission, the necessity for a CUP, I don't know, but that need, that would be determined, but at any rate, it would be a PL zone or a P zone on this overall parcel that accommodates educational and sports facilities. So that lot line adjustment and the mergers kind of make it slightly tricky in the zoning aspect that I was talking about. Abe mentioned this 20 by 20 here, and if there was some confusion, it was probably because I didn't explain it well in the package. In reality, all that is going to be is a 20 by 20-foot approximately, square foot, 20 feet by 20-foot piece that will be left on this parcel over here as part of the racket club. So that will actually be the configuration of this overall lot. It'll come up here, come up there, and go like that. So this will stay part of that, which is part of this, okay? And so, and it is solely for the use of, this is the clay courts right here that are part of the racket club, and it's where they keep their clay. And so they need a place to do that, nothing too unusual, once you understand it. So that explains, I think, the lot line aspect, at least in general terms, and the CUP and the zoning aspect. This plan shows the overall development concept, and I guess concept is the operative word. We never know how far to go with our initial proposal. Obviously, this is a broad stroke approach to the solution, but we think we've got things kind of where we need them and satisfied Mark's needs for the campus. Starts over here with the, if you will, this is court number one, the most important court that they'll have. This is where the main events will be held, if you will, amongst their competitions that they'll be having here, that they continue to have on a regular basis at, at the Ohio Valley Athletic Club and at Weil. But now he'll have four courts on his property as well as the courts on the, on the athletic club property to use for his education. We're proposing a small pavilion at this point that would have perhaps, you know, restrooms and vending machines or something like that, so that people don't have to go all the way back to the building to use facilities. So we certainly want toilets there. May, may have a small office space, a registration area or something like that to facilitate games. These are all hard courts. We have three others here as well. And then this component right here is the four-unit parent-student dormitory building. Going back to the demographics, they have a large, a large number of people. A significant percentage of them are visitors, again, and many of them have a cultural need to spend, to not separate, and so parents accompany their children, and actually, it's a real problem for Weil Academy. They're trying to constantly find places within the community for short-term rentals for parents and students. So he's going to address that need with these units in that location, they're 4,000 square feet, four units, 1,000 square feet each with two bedrooms in them. This is the existing 13,000-square-foot building. It doesn't read very well on this projection here, but this is the addition in your package. It shows up more clearly, I believe. So we're adding this, it varies from one story to two stories, but it will be a total of 7,000 square feet in addition area, and I'll go to that right now. This is the existing building. It's not pocheted on your plan. The addition is the gray pocheted portion that you can see it reads, I believe, on the prints that you have. This shows the 4,000-square-foot, two-story parent-student dormitory building. This is that connection that we are currently showing, and again, just a preliminary basis between the two buildings. This then, again, is the, is the addition. It will go from, we'll have a total of 24 female students and 48 male students, boys, girls. And unlike what the, it's occurring now, they'll all be housed in this building. Right now, I think a reference was made earlier to the Victorian Building, which is the older house on the hill, looking at the property up this way up Pope Lane, and that's where the girls all reside now, along with their dining commons. And so what will happen there, it's not part of this project, but the girls will come out of that and move into this building, and that will remain dining, the dining facility as it's used now. So I won't walk you through the details of the plan. You can see it, and it's not that hard to understand, but again, we have a separation. I'm going to pull up my plan, I can read that a little better. We have the girls on this side, and they're on one-story level, the 12, there's 12 rooms, two to a room. And then we have a lounge and a couple of other additions, bathrooms, laundries, laundry area and things like that. We also have a dorm-parent room. This is, you know, for the dorm mother, dorm father, the adult supervision, 24-hour supervision that'll occur. Same thing on the other side. This is the boys' side, except for here, we have a two-story aspect to it. It's using both existing first and second floor for a total of two, 40, 24 rooms, two to a room, 48 boys. Again, with the, the parent dorm room up in that area, and then commons areas, outdoor barbecue area out here, entry area, entry courtyard, all kind of engulfed within these arms that will create a nice quad space. Mark's intention is to really make this a premier academic facility, and part of that is the, you know, having that great building as part of the infrastructure for the campus. And so we're really creating that with this quad space, feature in the center, stairs going up, and all kind of low-key. I think those of you that have visited the building will recognize that it's a challenge, okay? I'll just leave it at that, to remodel it aesthetically. I don't think I need to walk you through the second floor plan, but it's in your package. It just shows those other upper floor components. I think the one thing I didn't talk about was the office space that'll occur in this area, administrative offices on the second floor, to conform with ADA walls. They have some offices on the first floor as well. These are two elevations. The first one is, whoops, excuse me. The first one is of the, what we're calling the front elevation. This would be looking, I guess we would say, kind of northwest, north primarily, from the parking area at the racket club and the shared parking area with the tennis academy. And the nomenclature, the vocabulary will be kind of like, I think I described as a contemporary Western craftsman or something like that. I made up some adjectives there that kind of come close to it because it's not a craftsman, it's not, you know, a ranch building, but it'll have a metal roof and it'll have some wainscoting and some portico aspects. It'll key off the existing roof, it'll key off the racket club, and it'll fit into Ojai. It's, it'll be a pretty low-pro sort of building in that regard, big tall windows. We'll make it as handsome as we can. This, and we have, we think we've really done that. We're not showing the other three elevations, they're going to be more of a challenge, but we'll come back to those and try and apply as much of this vocabulary as we can to those other three sides as well. This is the simple dorm, parent-student dorm building with the four units immediately adjacent. So that's kind of the architecture and the site plan in a nutshell. Just to go back briefly on the connectivity aspect, I want to show you, you've all, it sounds like most of you have seen the site, but in case you haven't, this is the view from, from Bryant Circle. There's Pope Lane going off there to the left. This is that parking area, this part that was talked about briefly. Until 2005, there was no vehicular connectivity at all between Bryant Circle and the athletic club. That was added at this point. The original plan did not have a connection there. It was something that the owners voluntarily did because it facilitated both their needs through a mutual parking agreement that they had. It's rather convoluted, and it may be, if it's used by some, it's primarily probably used coming through into Bryant Circle. Not a lot of people necessarily arrive at the racket club from Bryant Circle. Those that are using the racket club from Bryant Circle probably walk because they're working in that area, but no one's arriving from Bryant Circle. There's just not a population base there to do that. So it's kind of a one-way thing where people, some people use it as a shortcut, and to be perfectly frank, it's posed nothing but headaches to the owners. Gas tanks are drained regularly, there's a lot of uncontrolled access to the property. A lot of crime has occurred since, since it's happened. That said, connectivity is something, at least in its general term, was, who wouldn't want to support that, especially when it gets down to pedestrians and bikes? But inviting the traffic through this property has just caused nothing but problems for the owners. That said, we are open to connectivity, and I'll talk about that in a moment. This then shows that the curb cut that that existing shared parking access goes to. There's the other side of the building, and they are completely different-looking buildings, depending on which side you're looking at. I don't quite understand that. You would not know that's the same building looking at it from this side, it's from the, from the north. But here is the Fulton Street point of connection right here. Whoops, I'm using the wrong pointer. And this is something we've been talking about for decades probably now, at least since I was on the Planning Commission, we were talking about it. And it's a great, it needs to happen. It's going to happen, as Commissioner Crabtree said, it's imminent. It's going to happen, just a matter of when. So this is following it further. This shows the view from that connection over to the other side of our building. This shows the Fulton Street connection going through here, and off here is the northeast corner of the property that Commissioner Crabtree was talking about, I believe. And that's it, looking at it from, from the Fulton Street point directly into- And that's it, looking at it from, from the Fulton Street point directly into the Wile Academy and into the Racket Club. This is it, looking from the Racket Club out towards Fulton Street. That's the point of connection right at Fulton. That's our connection right now from Fulton Street. It's been used a lot lately. I don't know if any of you noticed that. They've had to close it off, put boulders and things like that, but people want it. Let's see, what's happening here? This kind of says, it kind of summarizes the problems that they're having and what our big concerns are, and that is, you know, it says, "We caution children present, no through traffic." Well, people are racing through just because it's there. And that crime has gone up there, and it says you are being, you know, watched, basically, video cameras because there's been so many thefts and things of that nature. So when we first heard, I'll have to be frank, when we first heard about the interest in connectivity, for some reason, I'll have to, there's nothing, I'll have to say I misunderstood what was being asked for originally. And I think if I am not mistaken, what is being asked for, well, first of all, we just, we absolutely have to get rid of this maze, this kind of thoroughfare that comes in and goes like that. It's a very jagged sort of thing. This is where people enter off of Bryant Street at that point. But what we are totally amenable to, and what makes perfect sense, is enhancing that, and we would accept this as a condition of approval if that's the way it went. So when this does occur or at whichever point, we start making improvements to facilitate this eventual point of connection at that point. And also, I recognize Abe's point about reinforcing the pedestrian connectivity through here, and we will certainly do that as part of the next round of development. We have to temper that with the fact that this is a high school campus, and we're not trying to invite strangers walking through any more than Nordoff does. You know, in fact, you have to check in, you can't just walk through Nordoff as a campus. And, or any school for that matter. And we are, there's going to be 80 students here, living here, and they want to know who's walking through their property. So we have to be smart about that, and we'll have appropriate connections somehow to, I don't know how we're going to temper that, you know, where we want people to be encouraged to use this. One way to do it obviously would be to encourage it perhaps along here, but how we encourage that pedestrian aspect through there without saying, "Come on into our campus, we have, you know, 80 young children, young kids here." That, we'll have to figure that out, okay? But we recognize that interest in the connectivity, especially as it pertains to pedestrians here. I think obviously we'll get the connectivity here for cars, and that's a good ultimate goal. I think what we'd want to do there is put a gate in so that we can close it at night, just as they currently do at the other end at the Racket Club, a point in this case, and that they don't want nighttime connectivity. And so by putting in gates and saying, "Okay, well, this is open during the daytime, and we have it now for access to the club," and to employees in here makes perfect sense, but to be able to close it off at night so that they don't have this continuing problem, again, just as they do now. That would, I think, address Mark's concerns. Is that the case, Mark, or do you have anything to add to that?
No, I just, just to put it's viewed as a school campus.
That's right. So I think we're going in the right direction, and so we want to try and balance those concerns with you if we can, but certainly not, and I don't think it was ever your intention, I misunderstood that, to invite cars to continue to drive through the middle of the campus. But that, that's a distinct, in fact, right now what we're doing is we're saying, because of the fire department requirements, that they be able to access the building on all sides, or at least the primary sides, where within 100 feet of the building, that we had already kept this open with a gate proposed at this point with Knox box on it so that the fire department can drive through at any time, but not encourage through traffic. So that's the way it's currently shown there. So that, I'm sorry if that was too long, but that concludes my presentation. I should have started off by saying, now this sounds kind of the wrong time, but it's great to see this planning commission again. Kathy, that's the first time I've been here since you've been on it, and it's great to see you as an addition, so. At any rate, we're here to receive comments. I don't know, Mark, if you want to get up and speak or if we've covered all the bases. This is a concept review. All findings, discussions, findings, whatever you say, as in non-binding, I realize that. And we'll be back for the final, and we'll be back soon, we hope, to address your concerns at that level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Any questions for the applicant?
That's pretty thorough.
All right. Well, we, this is a concept review, so we can, you know, have to close the necessarily public hearing, I suppose, in case we are, questions that come up. But what kind of feedback does everyone have then? Anything that can help them out?
Well, I'll start. First of all, I think what you're doing for the building application is a great improvement. So number one, I think that's good, and I'm thinking you're also being very sensitive to the site. Circulation for pedestrian and bike is an issue that I looked at, and I do ride on the bike trail, and I notice that a lot of your students use the bike trail walking to the park, and I know you've got the new tennis court, so there may be less of that, but, you know, just their access to town. So I think to consider an easy access to the bike trail would be really important for pedestrian circulation. At this point, I'm not sure exactly, you know, David, you talked about maybe making access along that Fulton Street, that potentially opening up, and I'm not sure if that's something you would do now, or you'd have to wait down the road to do that. But I would definitely consider that. And this is more of a little design consideration, and I love your quad idea, but you may consider keeping that open so it becomes an alternative use space for like dining or events, seating on the outside. You know, if shade was needed, it could have trees in the center, but just opening it up, just a consideration. And then, let's see, what else did I have? I do agree with your, at first I was concerned about the gate that you have, but I do understand that it's a campus and you want to keep it secure at night, and the fact that it would be open during the day and that that access back and forth was there, that makes sense to me. Looking at my notes here, see what else I had. I think those are the top things that I looked at.
My comment is an offsite comment, and it deals with Fulton. We talked about this yesterday morning.
Right.
At the breakfast. I'm very concerned about the proximity of the houses in the Sycamore Flats thing on Fulton to, physically to the, to Fulton itself. And I can see, you know, one of the things I've been told, well, we've got to do the Fulton thing because it'll reduce some of the traffic on Grand Street and make it an easier flow and that sort of thing. But I can see people being late to work and running down Fulton, and some kid, I don't think there's 30 feet between the door, all those houses that face Fulton, and the outside edge of the curve. And I can see kids running out there, somebody getting hit, and there being a lot of prop safety issues there. And I don't know how you address that if you open up Fulton. And I know Fulton's going to open up. Now, perhaps one of the ways to do that, and I'm just, and I know this is not part of the project itself, but one of the ways maybe to do that is do some safety control kinds of, you know, traffic bumps, lower the speed limit to 10 or 15 miles an hour there, that kind of thing. Because I've already seen people out there. If I had been on the commission when that thing was passed, the Sycamore Flats, I wouldn't even let them face that side of that open side at all. So anyway, that's my comment. I mean, I agree with what Kathy had said. I think it's a great project. If I was maybe 80 pounds lighter, I'd be over there playing tennis. Maybe I ought to be over there.
Do you open it up to others?
Older students.
Yes.
Well, I like, my first impression is this is a very cohesive plan in many of the ways, and the fact that you're simplifying the confusion that exists there is a great place to start. Speaking of the zoning designations and things of that nature, so you do your lot line adjustments, and I, and I think the P L designation is highly suitable for what you're proposing here. I think it's, it fits right in, and I have no objections to that at all. Great job with the architecture, the layout. It's definitely improvement. It's going to be great to see that building modified to what you're, what you're proposing here. It's, I like the allocation of the greens, you know, the layout of the open spaces within the campus. The connectivity, the circulation seems to be working well. It looks like it'd be a very enjoyable place to go to school and play tennis, so I commend you on that. I think the, the last area of my concern would be, is focusing back on Fulton Street, and I'm thinking, I think Court has brought up some good points. There is some, certainly some safety issues involved once we connect that street, and we think of what goes on at Bryant Street, and that's, of course, that's all commercially oriented, but to move traffic through a neighborhood's another deal. So it becomes a priority to mitigate traffic speed, and I think we have the means and features available to do that through that whole corridor. So it's something that's undoable, it's just going to take some thinking on our part. As far as this project's concerned, I would like to see curb and gutter go in along Fulton. I'd like to see sidewalk, and I'm not sure if that, I think that would probably, well, I can't say with authority because I haven't spoken to Public Works about it, but it may be required anyways. There's a question there about, that has to be addressed. I know that on a previous project that we were looking adjacent to this one, the recommendation was to literally build out the street improvements to the mid of the street, midway of the street. So literally build half the street, including the sidewalks, gutter, and half the asphalt. So this is something that I think staff will probably have to look into, and we'll have to get clarification, but it makes sense to do it because I believe that it is, this is an imminent improvement that's going to happen.
Make a quick comment, and that's in regards to Fulton also. This could be a goal and opportunity for our complete streets projects, where we're considering stormwater management, traffic calming, tree planting, and what have you.
It could almost serve as a model for...
Right. But of course, it depends on when it's, when it happens, but.
Yeah.
Wishful thinking, maybe?
Well, yeah. Right now, we're, depending on, you know, federal funds.
Yes.
And the plans have already been designed.
Right.
And the funds are contingent on, or.
Okay.
On that design, so.
And I think one other thing I saw in the staff report, and that had to do with the distance of the entrance to the project in proximity to Fulton Street. I think it was 150 feet is required, and this was only 100. So, you know, that may need to be adjusted and may also help with the safety issue.
Kathy, are you talking about the driveway access?
Yeah, the driveway, yeah, the ingress, egress, yeah.
Yeah, from the, oh, yeah.
Right.
Because it's so close to the.
Right.
Fulton.
Have you run it by the fire department, David? Have you run this plan by the fire?
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing I can really add, a few things I'm trying to think of that might help you when you come back around with it. Well, there's a couple of things that struck me as a little, I guess I had questions on. The lot line adjustment, you know, it's obviously when you put a lot line adjustment on a plan this small, it's kind of hard to tell what the setback is. But, you know, there's that structure over there by the volleyball court on, basketball court, you know, on the, actually says volleyball court, but, yeah. Are, yeah, yeah. Just make sure you don't create a non-compliant lot line adjustment for the Athletic Club. Because if it's, I think it's five-foot setback from the structure, so you might need to look at that carefully.
Yeah, so you're actually.
Okay. And the other thing that struck me as strange is that I don't see a commercial kitchen in the dorms.
It's in the big room.
I was going to say there. Oh, you're not moving the kitchen? Oh, well, that'll be interesting. I see the staff bar, though. Yeah, I just, I just thought, wow, that's, so you will be still maintaining the Victorian, then? Oh, okay, great. Great, keep the food away from midnight, huh? That's great, okay. Other than that, I know, you know, when the other planning commissioners are here, and you got this from, you know, Paul, there's really huge emphasis on pedestrian access. I realize it's a campus, but things like, you know, the gate is fine if the street improvement's probably done, I think is going to be one of the issues, the, with the Knox key gate over there for the nighttime. That's, you know, things like that are, my other commissioners, I know Commissioner Weaver and Commissioner Crabtree, and actually the rest of us, the pedestrian access has always been something we key, tend to key on, making sure it's, and you mentioned it, you know, how do you accomplish that? Well, that's, yeah, but that tends to be something that we talk about a lot in design review, so you did key on it, and I'm sure you're going to be keying on it. I think it's a great project, and it's going to be really nice. And I see no need for that thoroughfare there that you're pulling out. I mean, I used to have an office back there, and I think it'll be great to get rid of that. But I think it'll, my own, I think it'll be good to do the curb and gutter on that one side and provide some egress, you know, both for safety and other issues on that one side. Yeah, it'll kind of privatize a little bit more, too, so it's not such an open access as the Bryant Street circle is, where you just kind of look through there and go, "Ooh, I can jog through there." You know, it's more of a, you know, formal access. I think it'll be good. So I like what you did here. Sure.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for all your constructive opinions, and they will all be considered, and I agree with just about everything I heard. One thing that got us a little worried and that we need to work out with Public Works and Monty and others is the obligation to develop Fulton Street, the applicant's obligation to do that. And I think that we would, we definitely support that connectivity that we're talking about, and the, as, as Paul said, the imminent, you know, construction of that. But looking at it today, there's a lot of grading that has to go in to make that road work, and you're not going to be able to just go in and put in curb and gutter without actually doing the road. And because all the finished grades have to be attained, and suddenly if that entire connection there is put on the back of a single applicant for that one stretch that's shared by two, three property owners, it's going to be prohibitive. I can just tell you that. And so somehow we'd want to have maybe a fund or something that you pay into or accommodations made. We'll follow staff's directive on that. I just want you to be sensitive to the fact that it's not quite as easy as just putting in the curb and gutter that there's, as Katrina was saying, that that's been engineered, and a lot of stuff has already occurred there, and to get it to that point where it makes sense from a constructability standpoint just may not be in the cards at all.
Are you referring to the entire Fulton Street extension?
Well, or just that. I can't tell you precisely how far that is, but I'm going to guess that 150 feet or so that we have there from Bryant Street all the way back to the bike path, not the entire section. But when you talk about installing curb and gutter, I assume you're talking about along here.
Yeah, your responsibility to correct if I'm wrong, Katrina, would be along your parcel line there, and only that portion. The question is whether you're required to improve it all the way across or just half of it?
Well, and my question is, but how, if it's not there, we can't improve it. I mean, typically, that requirement is put on people when there's a road there, and they say, "Now we want," as was the case in Bryant Circle, "we want a sidewalk now." And that's a lot easier to do when you have curb, gutter, and drainage and everything else in there. But suddenly, if he's got to do all of that to, if he's got to do curb and gutter, sidewalk, he's got to do all the other things to tie into that, and basically he's paying he's got to do all the other things to tie into that, and basically, he's paying for the big part of that road at that point. So all I'm saying is, it's not quite as easy. Roy has a, I'm sure, civic interest and responsibility in contributing at whatever level's appropriate and standard. It's not your typical curb and gutter installation where everyone is required to make their contribution. We went through that on every, I'm sure you've dealt with it plenty on residential things here in downtown Ohio. It's always contentious, having to put in curbs, gutters, or sidewalks. Sidewalks is usually a lot easier to do, but again, the curb and gutter is, yeah, to what? So just keep that in mind when you do your staff report and determine what the conditions might be.
Yeah, it sounds like you need to talk to Public Works, but in most of the residential projects we've seen, and this is a little different, we've required the curb and gutter.
Yeah, and I understand that, but...
I get it, though. I know. There may be more involved, but we'd probably look for a report from Public Works before we could even address it.
And we'll be happy to entertain anything that's appropriate, of course. So, thank you very much.
Sure. Is there any other comments, or? Well, we look forward to it. I think it's a great, great project. Congratulations. Good luck. I hope it, I hope it works out.
Thank you very much.
The Planning Commission Subcommittee reports.
All right, I'll start with the landscape ordinance Subcommittee. We met, gee, was that yesterday? Yes, it was. We're moving right along. We had an additional public member join us, who actually was a good contributor, so that was very nice, because it was kind of late in the game in our process. But we're working on the draft portion, and yesterday, we spent our time just further fine tuning. We're going to be meeting again in two weeks, and we still have our goal of completing the document by the end of 2010.
Great. Okay, wonderful. And the director report and director actions, which?
None.
I was going to say, difference.
And next on our agenda is, I see Sue Horgan, I'm assuming you're our liaison?
I am. And I apologize for being late. I came from another board meeting, so, and I missed the entire presentation. I'm sorry about that, although I did look at that. That was very interesting. I actually don't have a report, but I'm certainly open for any questions, if you have any questions of me.
Ballot results?
Well, I, you know, I checked before I left my house this afternoon, and they had not been updated. As of yesterday, Lenny Clafe was ahead of Carol Smith by three votes. But I'm just told that tonight's results show Carol ahead by three. So it's Chinese water torture for these poor guys. Oh, I should, I should tell you that we, the city council, on a four to one vote, did pass the vacant building ordinance, which I believe that you saw. I voted against it for a couple of reasons. One is, I, I thought that the process that we used, I wasn't happy with the process because the first, at the first reading, we had the ordinance, but the council came up with about 10 or 15 amendments that they wanted, and I was not comfortable passing the ordinance without seeing the actual document that we were approving. So I voted no at the first reading, and I also asked staff, when it came back for the second reading, that I wanted some examples. What would be the effect or impact if we passed this? And they came back with a couple of examples, and I felt that the impact or the effects of that ordinance were excessive. I thought it was too much government. So I voted no, but it did pass. So, other than that, I don't think I have any other news.
The only thing I wanted to bring up, we were talking before the meeting about the Caltrans at one time years ago, doing that roundabout. And one of the things that we've requested of Public Works, I think maybe two months ago, was to maybe have a Caltrans representative here to kind of tell us, I don't know if this council's ever done that, but have the Caltrans come in and tell us, you know, what, where they're at, if there's, you know, some, we can provide suggestions. Like, one of the things that has been brought up often is that there is, well, you probably know this, I think you have a, your daughters at Villanova, they actually discourage students from riding their bikes to Villanova.
Well, they can't get across the highway.
They can't get across the highway. So it would be nice to have Caltrans here so we can express some of these planning issues, really, to see if we can make some headway. And also, we've had some projects recently that we looked at around the Vons area, and in the past, we looked at doing a roundabout there. It'd be nice to just see if they'd ever put that back on their list of possibilities. It'd be just nice to hear from Caltrans and give them some feedback. As a planning commission, we probably all have a lot of ideas that we'd like to discuss with them. And I wanted to see what your thoughts on whether that would be something that we should, we have requested, but if something council should do?
Yes, and I think that's a great idea, and I will follow up on that and see if we can't have a section on your agenda where you could have some discussion. And we could talk about things like the roundabout or whatever, or about the excellent paving job that they've just done. So, we have lots to talk about. I will, I will follow up on that.
Yeah, thank you. That'd be great. And thank you.
Well, just blow right in, and thank you.
Is there anything else?
How's our schedule looking, Katrina, for this bones of the year?
It's very quiet. We just have one time extension for Mr. Connor, who owns the property at Gridley in Ohio Avenue, next to Skip Misers, the empty lot. So there's a time extension that would come forward December 1st, and it looks like we'd probably cancel December 15th.
So a time extension for, is that, what, is that under a public, where do we stop that? A continuance because of public comment, or how do we handle that before?
It was, that project, Skip Misers project, was two lots, and Skip Misers owned it with his son. It was approved at a public hearing, design review permit.
It was, okay.
And then, it came back to you a couple of years later for a modification of the phasing plan, and so they just did Skip's part and remodeled that existing building. And that was part of phase one, and phase two really isn't happening, so that's, that's why they're coming back for the time extension on that phase two part.
Got it. December 1st, then?
December 1st. We'll have a meeting.
All right, that would be our next meeting.
Our next meeting, yeah.
Right.
Can we go back to the Caltrans thing? Sue, is it possible, maybe, and would there be any benefit to having a joint meeting with the council, the planning commission, and Caltrans?
If you have specific items, I mean, I'm not clear about, you mentioned the roundabout, but we should, if we have an agenda and we have a reason to do it, sure.
I think the, the reason it came up to begin with was that we were talking about the circulation of the buses, and how that had been changed, and it kind of created, we actually reviewed the shelter, that's what it was.
Oh, yes.
And we were, yeah. We had kind of before, we've never really had, you know, a transportation center. We've kind of, in the past, before the routes were changed, we relied on the continuity of the buses. And when they changed the routes, it kind of logjammed everything a little bit. And I think what it did is, when we went out to do that site visit on that shelter, we realized, you know, we really need to have some sort of a de facto transportation center. And we thought, well, the only way we'd ever be able to do that would be somewhere in that area. And before we could even think about it, we'd need to know, well, what does Caltrans have planned for the future here? And that, I think that's what brought it up, was, well, maybe we should talk to them and see if they do even have a plan. And if not, then maybe we should think about developing our own and presenting it to Caltrans. So that was kind of the primary, I think, reason we brought up maybe meeting with them. And Doug was here for that shelter, so he said, "Yeah, maybe something we could do." Since then, you know, we've always had that issue of the crossing over to the trail from Villanova.
Right.
And I think it's just getting more and more dangerous. And obviously, it doesn't fit with the community that we have a high school that can't access the --
Right.
And it would be nice if Caltrans even knew about it. They might not even know about it, so we thought, well, we should probably mention that to them.
We, I know at one time, we tried to figure out a way to get the trolley to be able to access Villanova so that those kids could have a way to and from campus without being driven. But that didn't go anywhere. But I will come back, I'll be here on the 1st, and I will come back with some response to this discussion.
Good, yeah.
I just have one other thing, a reminder that the city council commissioner holiday party is on December 17th. Mark your calendars, and you'll be getting a formal invitation in the mail soon.
Great. Well, that's it. We'll adjourn. Thank you.